Thank you all very much for being here tonight. I'm Don Townsend, County Executive for Dade County, Georgia. Dade County Board of Commissioners. I'm going to go around the room. I'll start here and then we're going to go this way. I'll let everybody introduce themselves here just in a second. But first, I just want to say, this is one of the two meetings we have a year. The first of which happens in March. The next would happen in late October. And so, the goal of this is not to finger point. Someone asked me that earlier today and I said, oh, no, no, no. We don't want no finger pointing. We just want to have an open discussion and a dialogue at times if you feel like you've got a question. And that's what we'll do. But we're going to go around to each group here shortly and let you give us our top one, two, three different things happening in your area of expertise. Before we do that, I'd like to start the meeting with prayer and also pledge of allegiance, even though we're not a community public meeting. So I'll ask the indication. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we're so thankful for this day. We ask, Lord, now that you would be with us in the further part of this meeting and help us guide the and direct the paths that we would take for the betterment of Dade County and our citizens, Lord. We each represent different groups here and I pray, Lord, that your hand of blessing will be upon each and every entity represented in the room as well as each officer, each representative and each elected official. Pray, Lord, that your will be done in their lives, that you would guide them in their discussion in this evening's meeting. And, Lord, we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen. Let's face the flag. Hand over heart. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If it ain't any water or anything, it's up here tonight. You're free to come out and get it. So we, this is the Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to start with Melissa, if you want to just introduce yourself.
I'm Melissa Dryafford, District Four, and I just want to say thank you to everybody here. I know everybody puts a lot of, a lot of work into what you do, so I appreciate everything that all of you do.
I'm Bob Woods, Vice Chair of the County Commission, and I represent District Three and I'm the Commander of the American Legion.
Bill Bullen, I represent District One and sort of look at EMS and different things around here, so. Good virtue, y'all, and thank y'all for coming. Good to see you, everybody.
Sandy White, President, CEO of the Alliance for Dade, our Chamber of Commerce and Welfare Center. Marcy Williams, standing in for my husband, George, who unfortunately was too ill to be here. I'm the Treasurer on the Board of Directors for the Alliance.
Evan Stone, the Economic Director for Dade County and the City of Trenton and also the Executive Director for the Industrial Development Authority.
I'm James Cantrell, Board Chair for the Industrial Development Authority.
I'm Lisa Cagle. I'm Board Member of the Industrial Development Authority.
Will Garrett, Board Member, IDA.
Adam Austin, Board Member of the Industrial Development Authority.
Mike Norris, City Police Commissioner.
Terry Powell, Parks and Recreation and Animal Control Commissioner.
Alex Case, Mayor, City of Trenton.
Monda Wooton, Last Mayor, City of Trenton.
Jason Chris, Board Member of the School Board.
John Warren, Board of Education.
Steve Forster, District Four, School Board.
And I'm Jane Griffin, Board Chair for the Board of Education.
Josh Ingles, Superintendent, Dade County Schools.
Robin Rogers, the County Attorney.
Alan Townsend, I'm a Board Member on the Water and Sewer Authority.
Melissa Saylor, General Manager of the Dade County Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you each and everyone for being here tonight. We appreciate that. I know it's a busy time and it's, tonight's karaoke, but don't tell anybody. So we'll, next, but not this meeting. I'm just kidding. I'd have to do that. Bob and, you know, we got, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. So anyway, we have some fun here. One of the things that the county has been busy with and working forward, and I'm going to ask our Commissioners all to chime in with me and help me. We're looking at two major facility construction projects, one of which is our Elections Building. If you were to take a little tour right down the hall here, you'll see Batteries lining one hall, you'll see in another hall, some other equipment that lines that hall and things stacked here and stacked there and Elections Building committees and whatever information back here is all stacked to the ceiling. So, once upon a time, Elections was a more simple process, but Georgia has complicated that process in the last 10 years or so and they've increased our footprint as far as the materials required to have an election. So, they've outgrown this facility. This room was never intended to have that kind of power, meaning you have to plug these machines up and then the flow of people coming and going and the parking situation. If you were here at court time this past, uh, court time, Election Day this past year, you would have seen a line go out the building and then people were parking all over Trenton just to get up here. So, our goal is to build, construct a new Elections Building here in the near future. The plans are out for that, for mechanical, what is it, Alex, the engineering?
They're back for review on some changes due to electrical upgrades that the state's requiring us based on the election machines. We only have so many on so many circuits and we had to go back and change that and change midstream, so we've got a change order in on that.
So the mechanical?
It's happening right now.
Right, mechanical, electrical and plumbing is out. We should be getting those back really any day.
Structural as well.
And so, our goal is to break ground just as soon as we possibly can. And that's going to be located behind the Bank of Dade on Georgia Avenue there between the bank across from the Trent Ministries Center on the left. A lot of people see the gravel a lot, but that's more, that's more of a future side of a farmer's market. We're hoping on the left, you'll see a big hole and it's very, a lot of rock there that they dug out. So, a lot of the site preparation's been completed down there and we look forward to getting that building started here. This year, probably will not be finished by the end of the year, but we're sure going to try. Anything you want to say on the Elections Building? All right. Also, Animal Control Facility is the next big thing that we're looking at and we've been working towards that with the City of Trenton and the city, I mean, they've got a few things on here to talk about that they want to mention this as well when it comes down to the city about Animal Control Facility. We're looking at a pad. I don't know if Terry's got anything on that tonight or not as far as pictures, but anyway, Billy Massengill, our Director of Public Works, has been down there for two or three days now leveling and compacting the soil. He's gotten compaction over, well over 100%. And so, the pad is, I don't know, it looks like a three, three to four acres pad now. That's a big, big place. But the building, of course, won't be that big, but it's going to have plenty of parking. The sewer is gravity fed. I mean, it's going to be right there on the backside. It's perfect. The power is already there and water shouldn't be a problem because we have our favorite water people here tonight, so we're going to talk about that. But that is happening. Bob, you've been doing a lot on that. You want to talk?
Sure, I'd be glad to. At the last meeting that we had concerning the Animal Control Facility, Melissa, myself, Terry and Monda, right, represent the city. We represent the county and of course, Alex and Don are there to make sure that we're structurally on track, right, for things. But the decision was made and voted on, and this is important for everybody to know that when we, our initial request for a proposal is going to be for a, the shell of the building, right? We could use the money we have to build the plumbing, right, the floor, the outer, right, walls and the roof. So we have our structure there. And then what we're going to strive to do is to get donations, grants. You got that, right? Right? And all that kind of stuff, right, working to get contributions. And we have some contributions coming in, which is absolutely wonderful, right, to over time, build the inside of the Animal Control Facility where it's not a burden on the individual taxpayer of Dade County. Because the citizens of my, from my foxhole, the citizens are in favor of it, but a millisecond later, they ask, how much is it going to cost me? And our intent, of course, is that it doesn't cost them anything, right? We'll strive our very best to get contributions and those type of things and build it over time.
And while we're looking at that, we're also, in the meantime, we'll be looking at some officers to go ahead and get going on our ordinance now and also the IGA for the city, county needs to be finalized so that we could go ahead and start collecting donations. And we also are looking at hopefully a part-time director to, which Monda knows a lot more about that, to come in so they could help with the arrangement of things and maybe the ordinance, you know. I don't think we need to go full force into it right away. I think we need to take baby steps. So we're, we're fast moving, folks. We're getting there.
Nothing to do with construction, but everything to do with the ACF is that we're also going to develop a 501(c)(3), right, which makes it a lot simpler for donations and contributions to come in, right? And so, we're working collectively to get that established so we have an easy way for money to come in, you know, from people that want to make contributions.
Right. So we typically have set a schedule of the first and third Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. I think our next, we have one scheduled for next Monday, but that, I'm Tuesday, I'm sorry, but that's spring break. So, we're not sure yet about that. We, that's a conflict for several people in the room. And so, if we don't meet that day, it's not because we don't want to meet, it's just because it's spring break. And a lot of families already had a lot of things planned, so there's nothing sinister going on, I promise. It's just a timing issue and we've, we'll be back on track. It's usually the first and third Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. We're going to try to host one at the City Hall and one up here, it's back and forth. So just be aware of that if you have an interest in attending that, you're very welcome to come. It's just a committee meeting, but committee meetings are public meetings as well, advertised and posted just like a county or a city commission meeting or school board would be as well. So, I think that's all I've got on those two things. Couple of, one other big thing is we, the county have hired a part-time grant writer and she's been busy. We've got about, I think, 17 different grants that we are looking at right now and that's awesome. Some of you know, you can become grant poor, you can get a lot of grants, but if you don't necessarily need the grant and you have those matching dollars, then you're, where do those matching dollars come from? So, we're being somewhat, you know, judicious about it and making sure that it's grants that one, we need and two, grants that are, is maybe already could help something that we're doing. And for instance, one of those is the Animal Control. We've, they've found a lot of different grants and what, one reason that Bob is talking about putting the shell together of the building is, a lot of these grants require us to have a building in place before we can actually tap into certain grants. Many of the grants do not pay for such things like as land and infrastructure, but we've already got the land and infrastructure, so that was, that's a blessing in that regard. There's many other grants that affect different things. We spoke this morning on Evan's show, went to the Regional Commission with Alex, our Mayor, and they always have several different people to talk to us about grants. Workforce investment is a huge thing that's going to benefit a lot of industrial partners in Dade County, but it will also help even public partners, meaning people that the county hires, the city hires, the school board hires. There's certain grants that we can get for a portion of their salaries for a brief season. And there's also a lot of economic grants, oh yeah, they got the pictures up now. That was earlier today. But anyway, those, those, I'm just letting you know that there are several different grants happening from the county standpoint, and if you're aware of a grant out there, if you'll let us know, we will help you write that grant. Now, the school has you, y'all got grant writers. We may call on y'all to help us at times as well, but, but just be aware of that. I'm going to call on now, did you have anything else? Okay. The City of Trenton, just to introduce, Mayor Case.
I will continue to work on the animal shelter as it's a joint venture. This year, the City Commission was working on budget. Last year, we moved a director into that position. It was shared with Parks and Rec. We had one person in Parks and Rec wanting Animal Control. We moved that over, left the Animal Control Budget to hopefully find a manager or a part-time manager that is designed to work with animal facilities and the shelters throughout. We've had a lot of different folks come up to us, our joint meeting as this place was packed. We've had a couple more local vets that's come and wanting to help and we actually talked to a lady today that works with a large facility that works about 30 hours a week for them and would like to help us. So, we've got a lot of interest, a lot of moving on that with splosh funds, both city and county, and we plan as well to keep moving forward with that. But with that budget in this year, we, we do have efforts to get a manager and some of facilities of that moving forward. As Monda had mentioned, or Don had mentioned, a lot of the grants have come in and some donations. We've received a couple of different, several things with helps of the current shelters and rescue groups and donations coming in to the Trenton-Dade Animal Controlling Facility that's coming, so. It's a very moving project. We're excited about it and thinking that we can stay within our budgets that we set in a splosh that our taxpayers have voted on for us to do that. So, appreciate the work of the committee and us keep moving forward for this, for the help. One of the other bigger things inside the city is some of the infrastructure, a lot of sewer, infrastructure updates we've done. One of the things we've done with our ARPA funding is done a major upgrade in handling our sewer with a lot of the solids and the stuff that comes through. We done a $1.4 million upgrade with 100, $804,000 of ARPA and the rest was splosh to put that first phase in. It's complete. It's really taken a lot of the load off the minute dirt that comes in and stuff that's flushed inside our sewer system. The plant has got a lot of room to grow, but processing sewer is different now with our industrial development areas have got different things that come in. One of the things we need to be able to process quicker is the solids, solids of grease and grime and other things. We have got an engineer involved that we've had almost nine years and we've got a lot of information out. We've been doing a lot of studying. We know how much sewer's coming in daily. We know how much comes in when it rains. We've got some pumps because of the infrastructure of the 1966 and 67 concrete clay pipe that we have throughout the city. We get, we've got millions of leaks and we've got some pumps that will run 30 and 40 hours straight solid to get the water caught up and pushed through the plant. So with that, with the last few, two years of studies and preliminary designs, we've got enough information to start working on a grant with JIFA. It's a Georgia Financial Authority and we're stepping through some of the federal grants that are issued through JIFA. And we're stepping that process with RFPs that the Regional Commission is helping us with. You have to start with engineering as well, even though we've done some preliminary engineering, we still have to step through the federal procurements of that. So we're, that's the biggest thing that we're working on right now. We're going to have almost three to four phases of upgrades throughout. Something to be able to process solids, the, one of our major pump stations, which is behind the transfer station, we call that the Wolfright Pump Station, is, is pumping at 80% capacity sometimes, so it's time to start replacing. So it'll be almost tripled in size. And a lot of our line infrastructure, we have camera at every major gravity line from pump to pump for the last two years that have been slowly working in our sewer budget. So we've got a plan and preliminary pricing to be able to go after some of this funding. The funding is a law, but it's also a grant that some of that will be, principle could be forgiven after so many years. So, we're working really hard for that. Again, financial is a big part of that, making sure that we can take care of that burden as well when we go over that. This could be pushing us the next 25 to 35 years, thinking of residential growth and industrial growth as well is a big thing with that, to be able to handle things and when IDA gets requests and how much BOD can you handle? And we've got a limit, but if the limit is over that, then we have to work with that first to see what they can do to get that limit down and handle themselves. We've got a few industries that has in-house BOD eliminators that does that, so. And it's all a work in process with all of us, everybody here, and we appreciate being here, talking about this. So I'll let the Commissioners say anything if they got anything.
All right. Now, that's the first, when Monda Wooton does not say something about Animal Control Facility.
Monda Wooton's been sick for a while.
She's been a little under the weather, so her voice may be a little muted tonight.
I'll speak on behalf of Monda Wooton.
Okay.
All right. Now, this, this is serious, going back to the Animal Control Facility. The great news is, the bumper sticker that you need to take away from, from this portion of it is, is that people that are out there, they're excited about what we're doing. There is positive discussions out and about, about what we're doing with the Animal Control Facility and so, and some people that have dollars, right, are aware of that and they're trying to help us out. So that's just a good thing, that, that people hear it, they like the way we're going down the road, so we're getting some stuff to happen.
Hey, I do appreciate everybody, though. This has been a long time coming and I feel like we're all moving in the same direction and it's going to be great for our community, for our people, for our animals, but it will, it will raise the bar for quality, I feel like, for quality of life in our county.
I want to thank the City of Trenton Commissioners for being here and thank you, Mayor Case, for that report. Now, we'll hear from the Dade County School System.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend, one thing on our agenda is kind of piggybacking off what Mayor Case said about population residential growth. We certainly have the physical space to take more students. The, our enrollment has pretty much been on a decline since 2011 after the tornadoes. Lots, lots of families have, were displaced. Around 2011, we were right around 2,300. Right now, we're, you know, just, just under 2,000, above 1,900. So, we've got space in all of our schools, the physical space. Of course, that, you know, the more students we get, then we would have to invest in some human capital. But, you know, as, as the population and the residential growth starts to take place, we're, we're going to market to, to young families to attract those kids into our school system. Couple of things that are not on the list, this November, we'll be advocating for another East Spots, educational spots, we're projected to collect, reach our cap at about three quarters early. And it's my understanding that Secretary of State sent out an announcement earlier this week that there will be a statewide election this time of November, so our goal would be able to get our East Spots, our East Spots referendum on the ballot then. And then, the last thing I'll mention is, the state legislature, the Governor's Office of Student Achievement released a list of schools, low performing schools, several weeks ago. Dade County High School was on that list. We don't, we weren't clear as to how they came up with the metrics to, to come up with that calculation. We don't have any direct contact with the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. All of our communication goes through the Georgia Department of Education, but regardless, Mr. Cooper and his team are taking that serious and they're going to do everything they can to get off the list because we know there's great, great things happening at Dade County High School. So, Board Members, you all want to add anything?
Just to know that what we do know is there are five markers for that list. And one of those markers is attendance. So, it's just like Mr. Ingles said, we definitely need to come off of that list, no matter what it is that is creating that. But I would like the community to know that there are really, really bright spots at the high school. You know, I mean, we have kids who are designing, who are making 3D designs and sending them to the space station. Our children are performing at Carnegie Hall. So, you know, I, what I don't want to have happen is for the community to get down and say, oh, Dade County School was just awful. It's not. You, our children are getting a good education, but what, just what Mr. Ingles said is, we're investigating to drill down and find out what is the marker that we need to work on. We do know attendance is one of those markers. We have, what is it, 25% of our kids are chronically absent. 25% of our kids are chronically absent. And that is a marker for, that, that the state is looking at. So, that's the one thing I would say is, I just don't want the community to, to not feel positive about the school because there are wonderful things happening there. We just need to find out what it is that is that black spot and rub it out, get it out and, and make all of our markers and indicators be where they need to be.
You know, but if we're, the challenge there is, right, Doctor, that if we're generationally handicapped, okay, because of the examples, right, of parents, you know, I mean, they're not obviously enforcing their kid to come to school, right? You know what I mean? You know, and maybe they didn't, but that doesn't mean the new kids shouldn't, but you know, that, I'm just saying, that mission is going to be hard to accomplish. You know what I mean? Because if you don't have buy-in from their parents, right, that, that's a hard road to go down, isn't it? You know?
It is, and I, I don't have any data to back this up exactly, but you know, we're in a situation where we can blame everything on COVID. But we all know that during, I mean, we have, TBA is just now going back after COVID. So, there was a whole, going back to, to the office after COVID. I, I think, you know, we were in, in a, in many years of not needing to be in person for work and for school, and I think that some habits were developed over that perhaps, and that we're also not just working with generational issues, but also with issues left over from COVID, when, when we had to be very careful, when kids had a sniffle, you didn't dare send them to school. But now, thankfully, we're passing. But now thankfully, we're past that. And, and we just need to get that mindset past that.
You know, this time of year, we get, we get visits from all the schools in Dade County at the American Legion Museum, right? And they're ongoing now and it's positive and it's good. But we strongly emphasize education while we're there. You know, we're just not talking about conflicts and those kinds of things at all. We're talking about, you know, having your head in the game, right place, right time, ready to work, get a good education, et cetera, to all these, all the children that come in. So we're, we're trying to support them that side as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Don, are we able to ask a question?
Sure.
So what was the percentage before COVID?
Of chronic absenteeism? I don't know that.
It's just over 10%.
So now we're at 25%.
With the dismantling of the Department of Education, is that going to bring a lot of challenges to our local, how's that going to affect us? Will it be good?
President Trump signed an executive order last Thursday, I think, to dismantle the U.S. Department of Education. I announced at our board meeting this past Monday. We don't have any direct communication, direct contact with the feds. All of the funding and all the federal regulations throw, flow, flow through our state agency, which is the Georgia Department of Education. And they have a federal programs division. And we have a federal programs director. So all, you know, all of our communication is directly from our federal programs director to DOE.
Do you think we'll see?
In theory, if Trump shuts it down, what we're hearing is the, the funding's still going to continue.
Not.
It's just going to shift to a different department. And perhaps let, we, let it be block grants where the funding goes to the state. The state sends it out to the local districts and the states are responsible for monitoring. So if that's the case, then it would be less, less red tape.
So maybe some relief for the unfunded mandates, maybe?
Possibly. But I know that our, the Georgia School Board Association and the Georgia School Superintendent's Association, they're monitoring it closely. And my understanding is it will take an act of Congress to, Congress will have to act on it. So that's my understanding.
You mentioned the East Splot. I just want to say, I was on the Board of Education back in the 90s when we didn't have an East Splot. And we had the leaky roofs. We had old flooring that was coming up. We had lighting problems. We had a lot of capital issues and no money. And so let me tell you, it's a great thing to have the educational special, special purpose local option sales tax. For people watching this online, that's a, Splot means sales taxes collected from everyone that travels through our county. Yes, we pay it as well if you buy something locally. But every time someone from Oklahoma or Minnesota drives through and buys a gallon of gas or a hamburger or some chicken, then guess what? They're paying a little bit of our capital improvements. They're by helping us buy ambulances for our protection, fire trucks, helping us do all kinds of things with the school system. So that capital improvement money is huge. And when you go to the polls this November, you're not voting for a new tax. We're just renewing it, okay? Renewing it. We're not looking at any new taxes. That might get out there, but that's not a true statement. It's renewing a tax. And so, all right, anything else? Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to economic development. Mr. Evans, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to talk first on the economic development side and then we'll talk about the industrial development side. I continue to, to meet this year with several realtors that are looking for different locations within the county to be able to bring potential retail establishments. The, the Food City is finishing up their 12,000 square foot expansion. It seems to really, we've had an uptick since the first of the year. Realtors wanted to come look. I met with a, with a company, actually it was on a Sunday afternoon about three weeks ago that wanted to know if they could come and visit. So I toured them around on Sunday afternoon to look at some of the property that was, that was available. So there's a lot of activity on that side. It's a hurry up and wait thing. But it, from the economic development side, as far as the, the folks that want to move in, I worked with the mayor. We've got one company that wants to leave Chattanooga. Not necessarily a big industrial, but they, they've got a really nice established business. And they've been trying to locate acreage here in the county somewhere from basically south of Trenton all the way to state line. So we're, we're hoping that we can be able to put them somewhere because they want to move their business out of Chattanooga because it costs too much for them to operate up there. And the good thing about it, they're, they're Dade County folks and they're wanting to move their, their company here. So that's, that's good. So there is a lot of activity on that side. I will move over to the industrial development side. Currently with the board, we're working with about five different companies in the industrial park now. And they're going through about a 45, collectively about a $45 million investment increase with several hundred jobs over the next five years. So we've got, I talked to my economic directors in different parts of the state and they think we have a very unique and positive outlook here because they don't see a lot of expansion in their local area. They're still trying to recruit as well as we are. But we've got some, our companies are well diversified. We've got medical, we've got steel, we've got pressing parts. Some, we don't have all of our, bring up eggs, eggs in one basket, so to speak. So that helps us. And I believe all of our companies, for the most part, seem to be very healthy and growing. So that's, that is a great news, especially with that type of investment over what they've already got. So that, that is good. I'll echo what Josh said. Josh and I have talked about this before. And go back pre-tornado, we lost 174 homes, I believe. EMA Director Alex is going to testify to this. It was either damaged or destroyed, a couple of department complexes. Well, we were almost 2,400 students at the high school at that point. And now we're struggling to make it 2,000. We've never recruited homes and places for folks to live really since the tornado. And it's, I mean, you know, we can look at the census and say, oh, there's a lot more people and there's a lot more traffic. But his statistics at the school really tell the tale. All of those young families had to go somewhere else because they were living in apartment complexes and different things. So when the tornado come through, they had to go somewhere. And I know that that's what the city and the county and even the Industrial Development Authority, we've been working and really looking towards workforce development housing. And that doesn't mean, I know that it was something that got out a long time ago about, well, that's government section, whatever. It has nothing to do with that. Absolutely nothing to do with government housing. Workforce housing is nothing more than a good way of saying, I can work down here at Inature or, and, and earn enough wage to be able to pay a house payment. It's, it's, it's not the half million dollar homes that we have luxury on, on the bluff. It's good homes that we all live in. A lot of us live in those type of homes and have a, have a great time for it. So workforce housing is not any kind of government thing that we're looking at. It has shifted because the governor's recognized it's a statewide problem. It's given us the opportunity to have grants that he's set aside millions of dollars to help build that type of housing. So I, I think with all of this that's going on with the grants that are out there and everybody looking to build these homes. We've got one, one family here that's, the Fairclaws, they're building several homes over here. That's going to, that's going to help and we need to build a lot more. To be able to help Josh, because those workforce housing families working in the industrial park, work in different places around here, but they also have kids, most likely. So you're going to, you're going to have your students come back. So I think we've got a problem that we can all work together and get that problem taken care of. It helps his problem, it helps our problem, you know, getting people in here to work. We got one company that's expanding and they're going to add 200 jobs here. And they're already one of the largest employers in the next five years. And when they looked at me and said, now can you help us find the employees places to live? And I said, we're working on it. I mean, you know, we're very fortunate. We have a lot of folks that work outside the county. But we also have almost 37% at one company that live in Alabama that come here every day. So we have a, a shifting workforce that goes in and out. And I don't want to take up any more of the time. Grants, just keep in mind, grants is our money. That if we don't try to get it back, somebody else will. But it's our tax money that's went to the federal state level. So anyway, and one other thing that I'll, I'll mention, I did a couple of letters of support, one for the ambulances that the county's trying to get. And you think, well, what's the IDA got anything to do with that? We want to have good ambulances to be able to respond to our industrial partners, to our, to our economic department, partners that's got restaurants and, you know, places for people to shop. They need to have good medical stuff. So when you're asked, please, everybody, you know, write letters of support for these grants because likely or not, that's what they look at. They want to look at several different folks that are having buy-in with that. And I'll, I'll turn it over to the board. I just wanted to kind of go through that. But all in all, it's looking really good for our growth here.
All right, thank you, Evan. The only thing I'd like to say is that the Industrial Development Authority is looking to enhance our county by bringing in industry, not just any kind of industry. We really are selective as to who may come in with us. And so we just want to say that we're working daily to bring the right companies here. But at that same time, we need, they ask the same question he's asking, you know, have you got enough people living there to support our, whatever it may be? You know, a couple hundred jobs or whatever. And, you know, we, we have had some companies come that we couldn't help because we, you know, our sewer system, you know, which I know the mayor's working on it, but we need to, you know, have, it won't, it won't take the flow of what they're having to, to bring. So that puts us in a, we just have to say, well, we can't handle it. We just turn them down and they go to Walker or somewhere else. I mean, that's the crazy of it. So anyway, we're still working together to address any company that comes here that we feel like would be a good fit for our county. Anybody else want to say anything?
I'm very much concerned about affordable housing for the workforce. So that's something in my prayers and my thoughts.
Well, Don, Don had mentioned at our meeting, we stayed extra three hours with several county and cities on housing. And we are working with a development now that has approached us for several homes, but we've also taken a beating of it as well, working with the Fairclaws and another large company. And the first thing they come to us about was sewer and zoning because they, they won't land homes that's not built in a zoned environment that can't be certified and checked off on and stuff like that. So we're still in the process of that. The city is looking at what that is. We're, it's got to step through several steps. But we've also, there's some property issues or some wetlands we're having to work with. That's still in negotiation of several 80 to 130 homes possible. And then we, again, talk with Josh. We have a road infrastructure that some people are worried about. We're, you know, we're getting beat up a little bit, but we need it because we people need it here, you know? So, but we're working hard too. And there's a lot of things we don't get into, but we're always working hard to do that. And some of those meetings, we're talking about these grants for low economical housing groups.
So I'm curious, what is the, well, actually two questions. First of all, when you talk about affordable housing, like what's the number that goes with that? What's the, for the industries that are trying to be recruited for workforce housing for that? What is that number that you shoot for, that range?
I will tell you, the, the, the governor set aside money to do workforce housing through economic development and other government agencies. And it is a, I believe 290,000 was the cap.
270,000.
So it could be less, it could be less. And then there is a certain percentage, even if you do like apartment complexes, the rent can only be so much. You know, it's set for like $1,100 for a two or a three bedroom. I don't have it right in front of me.
That's okay. I just.
But, but there is a cap for workforce housing. So if someone was able to qualify and get the grant that the governor's doing for workforce housing, it does have a, a cap. You can't sell homes for $350,000. It's, I believe it's 290, is that correct?
This way.
William, who, who, who done the preliminary work just came in and, but there is a cap on that. So it'd be less than 290,000 dollars for a home.
The grant he's talking about is for infrastructure. Nobody would pay to put the sewer lines in, the power to them, all of those things, build a road. That's what that grant's for. Then the builder, whoever that might be, would just buy the lots and go from there. So that's kind of what we were working on it.
Yeah, it's up to $2.5 million, that, that grant.
The other question I have is what is the, just a thumbnail sketch of the criteria for the perfect fit for Dade County when you're recruiting industry?
I'm sorry?
Perfect industry.
Oh, well, one of the things in, in the board, all of our board members here can, can attest to this. When we get something in, first of all, if we're going to help them come in, there's certain criteria and guidelines that we look for. We look for total investment. You know, if it's a small investment with three or four or five, 10 employees, we don't have the mechanism, the board doesn't, to be able to help them. We're going to be looking for the amount of money that you're going to invest in the community, but also going to be looking into the number of employees. And then we're going to look at how much do you pay per hour? And I'll give you an example. Let's say the first company came, comes in tomorrow. We have an average wage in the industrial park of, say, $18 an hour. All right? If a company came in and they, they wanted to hire 500 employees, but they're only going to start and the average employee is only going to make 14, we're not going to be able to help them a lot because that's not what we're looking for. We're looking to enhance the dollar amount for the individual, okay? And then we're looking for the type of investment that's going to be solid for the economic growth for property values being able to go up. So we look at various things. But that's kind of, we're looking at the, the amount of investment. And then we also look at what type of job that is. Just because they pay $50,000 a year and maybe $50 million investment, is it the right fit for Dade County? And this board looks at everything that we bring to them and I bring to them and it said, okay, this is, this would be a good fit, this would not be a good fit based on their expertise and, and all the different, all the different experiences that they've had. And, and y'all are welcome to add to that. I probably left something out.
I know we're not proud of the industries that we've got in the industrial park right now. And we would not in any way want an industry to come in that would take away from those industries that are in place. We've got really good employers that have really good employees. We're, we're not going to undersell the current industries, no matter what type of industry it would be coming to the calendar industrial park.
One of the things that I might add, we had, it's always been talked about ever since the Vanguard came here. Vanguard came here at the time, you might remember, that Shaw Industries shut down. And we'd lost 400 jobs. There's nobody sitting at the table from the Industrial Development Authority was here when that happened. But they were able to get this Vanguard Corporation with the trailers to, to be able to move in here. They were able to give them an incentive. You got to keep in mind, what we're doing every day, we're in competition with basically everybody in the country. Dade County is in competition with every other county in the United States for someone that's wanting to look, to locate their company here. They took that situation with that company and they were able to put together, with Governor Deal at the time, he put a million dollars of, through a grant of cash to be able to have them locate here. And there was a lot of pushback and said, well, it's only $10 an hour. It's nine years into that, or eight and a half to nine years, and they're averaging at about $18 an hour now. So they've almost doubled because of our. Now, so they've almost doubled because of our, you know, the rising tide rises all the boats, if you will. So as McDonald's starts paying fifteen dollars an hour, Energy can't pay fifteen anymore. Vanguard can't pay fifteen anymore. They got to keep going up. So over the last ten years, we've seen a dramatic increase in hourly wages in the county. As a matter of fact, there was a survey that came out, and I shared it with the commission, and I can't remember if it was, and our board, that Dade County hourly wages, we beat Katusa and Walker and Chitoga for our hourly wages. Overall, for, for what we're doing. And that's because all of our businesses are doing so well, you know? So that, they were able to bring that business in, but they've been able to also increase their hourly wage to up to a, an average standard of what the average is in the industrial park. So that's, that was good. And one, one other thing that I'll say, it's very important, infrastructure, infrastructure. I know that y'all are working hard, and I know that y'all, y'all got an, an older system, and definitely Alex has been talking about, the mayor's been talking about nineteen sixty-eight or whatever. It's, y'all have been given the burden of having to upgrade these systems that are, you know, should have been upgraded years ago. And we know it ain't easy. We just got to support everybody, you know, to be able to do that.
So what I've heard from the IDA is that your priorities is to bring a good steakhouse to Dade County. Okay, I just want to make sure that I took my notes down.
Do you like the medium well? That, those types of things will eventually come. I trample sometimes when, you know, I'll hear, well, so-and-so's going to come, you know? And, eh, probably not. You know, it's, it's just, and keep in mind, our population, when it goes up to a certain level, there's a different type of restaurant that will move in. You know, the Chili's and the, the TGI Fridays and that type of restaurant requires a population of a certain size.
They do.
And they, you know, but anyway.
I'll just miss.
So when I started here almost twenty years ago, the sewer system was about thirty-five years old. Now it's almost sixty-five.
Well, I will reiterate, the infrastructure clay piping has been in when the first sewer system was put in. The plant was redone in the nineties. The plant is upgraded, it's been upgraded. It's the clay and it's the piping.
Right.
Over time, and what we've been replacing everything. And it's not the flow that we can't handle when industrial, it's how dirty the water is. It's the, the flow could be handled. We, we have cut our flowway down when Shaw left and have been in our lower apartment since they left. We can still grow. It's just, we got some industries that give the water so dirty of greases and grimes and grit, that EPD won't allow, it costs us more to process. It's not that we can't handle another hundred thousand gallons a day, it's just how dirty it is. And it's an EPA limit that, that we have to be allowed to put back in Lookout Creek, that it costs us more. And that wasn't designed as an industrial sewer back when it was done. And we've talked about what can we do to get more industrial? That's what some of the engineering is, is how can we handle heavier BOD? It's not the dirty stuff, it's the greasy, grimy industrial stuff that's hurting us right now.
Was anything ever done in the late nineties, early eighties to the sewer system?
Well, the final system, the new plant was built in nineties. It's when I graduated, Duane Moore is nineteen nineties when that plant was finished.
Reason I ask that, I know the connection with my dad and Mayor Ojatia from Chattanooga. He stopped me at the restaurant one day when I was on city council. And he said, boy, what do you know about sewer systems? And I said, absolutely nothing. And he said, well, I hear you're going to have a meeting tonight on it in the city. And I said, yes, sir. He said, if they don't mention trickle filter system, tell them no. So people from Atlanta, and this was probably, I guess, in plus or minus two years, nineteen seventy-nine. So some, some upgrade was made then, but I don't.
Well, the old plant that's in the bottom was the one some type of trickle. But the plant that was built in the late eighties, early nineties is, it's been there since. And there's been minor upgrades, but there's newer technology now. So it just wasn't done in the prior board here to take care of that. And we're looking hard at it. And we've spent one point two this last two years in it. And with, we put about two-hundred thousand dollars a year in the budget for line replacement that doesn't qualify for slops. If we can replace from manhole to manhole, it qualifies, but sometimes we can't do that. So we've been working hard. But we also were several years underrated from what it was. We had to really raise our industrial rates up. We had to raise businesses, you know, greases and stuff, and then the homeowners as well. But we've done it in slow steps over nine years. So it's getting there, it's getting better. But it's hard to pull out of the hole sometimes.
And I've said before, the county supports the city with the city infrastructure as far as the sewer. If we can go after a big grant in the future for them, we're all for it. Because with that new infrastructure helps economic development, which that helps water, and the water helps the economic development, that helps the county. It's just a big cycle and a big triangle. So at this time, we're going to hear from the Alliance for Dade. We are sad, or not sad, unfortunate, poor George is sick tonight. So give him our best, but y'all go ahead, Alliance for Dade.
Okay. We have got lots going on. A lot of you who have our newsletter see that. But one of the big projects that we are beginning to work on, we wanted to share with y'all tonight. And you have a copy of some slides, if we can pull those up. We are going to embark over the next couple of years to do some wayfinding signage across the whole county. So we had some design work contracted with the University of Georgia, Carl Wilson Institute Government. They have a design team that works with communities. And so they have produced what you'll see tonight and are still working with us on finalizing some things, so we're real excited about that. Basically, for those of you who might not be aware, a wayfinding signage project is a comprehensive initiative that, again, like I said, hopefully will finish in three to four years. Will begin in Trenton and expand throughout the county. The initial phases will focus on placing signage in, on city, county, and private property with later phases addressing signage with DOT right away. The reason DOT is coming last is there's some engineering and lots of paperwork that has to be done. So we're saving that the best for last there. This strategic placement will guide both visitors and residents to key destinations, including businesses, attractions, public services. The colorful cohesive signage that you'll see will not only enhance the navigation, but it will also provide a unique visible identity, improving accessibility and contributing to the community's charm. Ultimately, the project will foster a strong sense of place and create a welcoming atmosphere for all who live here and visit. Next slide. These are the colors that we're looking at, that the signage will be part of. And then here are some examples of what the different styles of signage would be. Next slide. So if you'll see our little picture there on the side of the road, if you see those Dade County signs that every county has on as you're entering, we will have these in those places. Probably won't have to be able to take the DOT signs down, but these will be off, off a DOT right away. But it will be a nice colorful sign that will let people know that they haven't entered just any county, they've entered Dade County. Next, next slide. Then also too, with the different communities in Dade, we have some wonderful communities all through the county. And we've chosen the, the communities that have, they're a little bit larger and that have voting precincts, will have this kind of signage, which we're calling community gateway signs. Those will be on major, they're roadways throughout the county, like Highway eleven, one thirty-six, that, that kind of area, coming in, in and out of those communities. Next slide. Then the smaller communities, we're calling neighborhood gateway signs. They will be kind of in the same places, but, but will be a little bit smaller and a little more unique to those communities. Next slide. Then for those communities who have community centers, they have the opportunity to get new community center signs that have the same kind of look. And so this is the proposed mock-up for that kind of sign. Next slide. The Industrial Authority is looking at new signage for their industrial park entrances. And so this is the proposed sign for, for that. Next. Also too, there will be attraction signage. This won't replace the attractions signs themselves, but will add to and, and help identify for visitors where those attractions are. Will ultimately have a map signage that, that a visitor could have, that they can just follow the trail and see all the attractions that we have in the county. And then also, we're proposing, hopefully on some existing signage, if not, we'll add signage with their own poles. But this is directional signage for downtown in the, in the city limits. And it'll direct, it'll be basic, it'll direct to public restrooms, it'll direct to shopping and dining, free parking, government facilities, that kind of thing. So it will be good not only for visitors, but for visitors alike. And then out in the county, we'll have other directional signage that will be a little more specific. It will address attractions and businesses that a visitor might want to, to, to visit. It will also denote with each section, the sign itself will basically be the same, but it will add whether it's in the valley or on Sand Mountain or Lookout Mountain. Our visitor guide kind of separates the community in, or the county into those, those areas. And so we'll do this the same way with the signage. And then the colors, green is for the valley, orange is for Sand Mountain, and blue is for Lookout Mountain. And so again, different signage all through this signage program will have those same colors depending on what area of the county is in. Next. We will also have a downtown kiosk. We're proposing that it go on the east side of the historic courthouse. It will have changeable maps, a way that we can, as we update new businesses and that kind of thing, that we can just change out that map that visitors can see. Then it also will have directions to other, other important information downtown. Then on the other side, it will have signage basically that directs people to where we are located now, the Chamber of Commerce and the Welcome Center. Then also, going along with the whole branding of this signage, we are hoping to wrap the two digital signs that are on the courthouse lawn with the same type of signage. So it would be the existing digital signs that are there. They would just have a new wrap around it, and then you still see where the actual information shows. And then we, we have a safe, we would like to have a permanent selfie station there in Veterans Park. It would light up, and it would be a great way for locals as well as visitors to, to show, you know, that they're here and, and enjoy their time here. The other one on the right-hand side would be a portable one. We're going to talk to the construction trades group at the high school and see if they'll build this for us. But this will be movable, it's just will be plywood, and we can move it around to different events or whatever as a portable selfie session. And then also, we can use these, this, this design work for merchandise, any kind of merchandise. The first slide that you saw were actual travel posters. So we can use those, we can print those and sell those. We're hoping to be able to put those up in a couple places around town just to promote all the wonderful attractions that we have. And that's it. Thank you very much. I would like to say a couple of things real quickly too. We are doing a lot of radio and TV advertising now in the Chattanooga market. Channel nine, CWN, Fox, and then J one oh three. We also are doing several ads. We're in the State Travel Guide, Georgia Great Places, Southern Living. Those are just some that have come out recently. I've got copies of Great Places on the table over there if anybody would like them. We have ads in all these, and then some in, some of these, actually all three of these. I think Cloudlin Canyon is in all three of these as far as an article or mentioned. So we're, we're real interested in, or we're happy about that. We also are talking with travel writers in and around the area. We just had a food travel writer that writes for the Chattanooga Times Press, and she also writes for, for some food blogs. She stayed at Macklemore, wrote about them, but she also wrote about Canyon Grill, Cafe one thirty-six, and Lookout Mountain Pizza. So, and we've gotten several other ones we've worked with. So, so those are, are around. And then on the chamber side, we've got a new workforce development team. And we've just done our first, first Fort Leif training with Trent Pressing. They have a trainer, and so we're able to provide, we're doing that every other month, and are able to provide training and a certificate for less than what they have to go out of town to get. So for seventy-five dollars, the next training will be in April, and it's in our newsletter. We just, we'll send it out tomorrow, excuse me, the first. And so anyways, we're trying to provide some opportunities like that. The committee's working really hard for some other trainings and things we can provide in the future that hopefully people won't have to go out of town to get. Thank you.
And you know, when we last had this meeting here, which was again, October two thousand and nineteen, we, the chamber at that time, we didn't have a chamber. And out of the discussion of this group, the Alliance for Dade was kind of birthed. So they are a direct result of this core group getting together from time to time. So great things are happening at the Alliance for Dade. And the wayfinding signage is, that's something that's been happening to y'all for about two years. I mean, they've been working hard on this. And when you try to brand a community, that's a huge undertaking. So they're doing an excellent job. We're excited to partner with them, and I hope all of you will find out more about that in the next coming days. I'm going to ask the mayor to talk to us about Downtown Development Authority's recently been rebirthed.
Yes, sir, it has. One of the things, working with our Trenton Dade Economic Director, Amy Stone, and seeing like how IDA gives tax, the state gives tax incentives to local business, or industrial businesses. We want to work on our small downtown businesses. Ms. Sandy White has also been a great help with this. It's her prior work, fourteen years inside of Downtown Development. Again, it's partnering with everybody here to do this. We had this downtown development in our organs, or in our cohorts for a long time. And so we rebirred it, we've got some great folks on it. We've had training, we've had meetings. Monda is chairing this as under with the, not chairing, but she's the member of the county, of the city commission to do this, along with the other members that we have. And the biggest thing we're working on now, along with our regional commission, is getting able for, doing a rural zone tax credit possibility that Sandy had introduced to us a long time ago, and we're working on it. We are sort of widening the downtown development area of Trenton. You see about our little downtown here, but we've got businesses everywhere. So one of the first meetings we done is kind of drew a map of what we're doing. Regional Commission is working with that to get it submitted back with DCA. Also have been taking a lot of the pictures that I see around. They wanted some more pictures of the city. So that's a moving in progress. And Sandy has got a meeting planned with the City of Hawkinsville that she worked with quite a bit. And her connections are really helping us. Again, we're working as a team here with Alliance for Dade and her experience with that, with the team that's there. So we're hoping that we can help the mom and pops and the one and two business employees with some tax credits eventually and some other things that can come out. Grants for improvements of businesses and looking at the, even the way signs, you want to keep a look moving throughout the city. Also, keeping this kinetics, looking what we have throughout the city and moving forward. Uh, also, uh, keeping this kinetics looking, what we have throughout the city and moving forward with that. So we appreciate those folks.
Thank you, sir.
And doing that, Ms. Sandy's help with that.
And just so you know, the, uh, Alliance for Dade and the Chamber and the gift shop, the official Welcome Center is now located in the old historic courthouse. Uh, as we can look out our window and see the beautiful building there. Uh, and they will welcome you to come by and visit. We're also looking to have a official ribbon cutting of that building on, uh, Wednesday, A- April sixteenth, around two thirty. So if you want to mark that time down, uh, we've been teetering with different days, but we're going to stick to the Wednesday, April sixteenth at two thirty. That's a busy day. I think the high school's got some things happening that morning with a career fair, but hopefully most of that will wrap up mid, midday. And so, uh, around two thirty, uh, till probably five or so, a little after, we'll be having an open house, uh, over here at the old courthouse. And if they are already in there and welcome you. I spoke with the G Doc today about the, uh, pedestrian crossings, uh, Alex has been working on. And so they'll be working on that, uh, because it, you can almost get hit. Some people stop, some people don't stop. Uh, so if you're coming around the courthouse these days, just watch out for our pedestrians and our visitors going into our Welcome Center. Uh, at this time, we'll hear from the Dade County Water and Sewer Authority.
Um, so we are the water authority. We are going after, um, appropriation funding. We were denied for twenty-five, well, not denied, but that we didn't get accepted for it. So we're going for the twenty, two thousand twenty-six appropriate funding, um, through Senator Warnock's office. Um, and part of that funding that we're seeking is to run a new line of lookout, um, and getting some asbestos AC pipe off the mountain, uh, near Nica Jack Road and Aslan and one thirty-six and one eighty-nine county roads. So that's where we're, and like Evan said earlier about letters of support from all of you guys are going to come in here soon because that has to be submitted when we go for this, um, this funding. So any letters of support from you all would be great to have so we can hopefully attain this funding so we can upgrade these lines and, um, get some of this AC out.
Well, I would just, uh, just mention that there's been an ongoing effort, uh, sort of nationally to get rid of, uh, lead pipes in, uh, in houses. And I'm sure you all, uh, received letters and, uh, asking, you know, what, what kind of pipes you had in your house. And, uh, and so, uh, that's, that's one, one thing that, that we've been, been interested in trying to, uh, discover, you know, where that is and encourage people to change the pipes because those lead pipes can cause, uh, health problems. And, uh, so we've done that and, and also, uh, we've, uh, had a, an effort to, uh, uh, do maintenance on the, the water tanks, uh, in the, in the county. Uh, the, uh, isn't it the American Tank?
American Tank.
American Tank Corporation, uh, came to us about three years ago and, and, uh, or two or three years ago and, uh, and asked if, if they could do an inspection, you know, of the, uh, water tanks. And we, we said, sure, you know, do an inspection. They brought back pictures of, of, uh, a number of things that needed to be done to the water tanks, you know, in the, in the county. And, uh, those water tanks have to, uh, have a, a special coating, you know, inside of them. And, uh, and so, uh, a number of them, you know, had to have, be recoded and, and, uh, and some places where rust had, had gotten on them, you know, and, and it, we just needed to do that, that maintenance and, uh, so that we could all have, uh, clean water and, and plenty of it, we hope. Uh, or enough to keep us comfortable anyway. So, uh, those are, that's a couple of things I can think of. And, and, uh, and there's been some, some new lines that needed to be done or, uh, and so we've, uh, we've had to, that's, you know, it's, it's all expensive, but we, uh, we try to be frugal in, uh, in how we vote on spending money. So, uh, but to, uh, provide good water, so that's, that's about all I have.
So you're saying that those, um, updates were, that they're done?
The, uh, the water tanks, I, I, it's all that maintenance they're done?
Yes, so they, so they, so they've done them, they rotate the tanks. So, um, we do wash, they do washout inspections, um, they do, they'll put a camera down in it and do a visual inspection. But that's something that this company does, that's what they specialize in. Our guys are not having to try to maintain these tanks. The Water Authority is not having to pay out the money to have tanks rehab. That's part of what we pay them for. And so, for example, if something happens, um, a ladder breaks on one of them, they will come in and they'll put that back on for us because that's what y'all see on your bill, the infrastructure fee, that is what that's for, is to help preserve and keep these tanks going. Because like what Alan said, they're part of our system. The storage tanks are part of our system, it's part of the things that keep our system going and making sure that those are maintained and staying nice and keeping the quality of water. That is what we're striving to do. It's just like what we're talking about, we're an age system too. Um, and we're trying our best to get it upgraded the best that we can and going after grants, going after funding to help do this is what we're striving to do. Because up on, uh, Highway three oh one, Michael's Road, there's an undersized line right there. We're actually upgrading that. We're waiting for a pre-construction meeting to get that line, um, upgraded. So for one, it, it helps right in there because it gets that undersized line out, gets that fire protection in there that a lot of citizens are wanting. And there's some fire plugs down the road too, it's actually going to help support that too.
So we, hopefully.
I just said, if, if I had an older home with lead pipes in it, is there any kind of assistance programs available to me to get those replaced?
Well, at this time that there's, that's one thing that the government hasn't really given to us. It's that there's something coming. Um, we call it the LCRI or LCRR. It's something that the government has handed down to EPA. The EPA handed it out to EPD and then they gave it to us, like you have. So it's just been like a, a chain reaction. So they give it to us a little at a ti- at a time as they agree to do stuff, putting stuff in the bag. So we have timelines that we have to meet. So like Alan was saying, there's a lot of people that are getting letters that are asking what type of material you have from the main to the house. We're, we're just doing it because the government's wanting us to do it. And eventually we're going to have to come out there and dig something up in your yard just to see, we are, the Water Authority is, to see what's in that, what you have. So, and that's like what Alan says, it's just they're shooting for, I do believe, twenty thirty-seven to have all the lead out in like, in any type of water infrastructure. Like us, we don't, we haven't done to, in our system, our side, it's just seeing what the customer has at this point in time.
It's mainly in homes, I think, that were built.
Yes.
Probably prior to the seventies.
Uh, anything under nineteen, maybe like anything eighty-six.
Eighty.
Yeah, because I think eighty-six is when they actually had to have everything out. And then in two thousand fourteen, um, there were some brass bibbons and stuff in Water Authorities, not just us, but just, uh, parts and stuff, but there was still small traces of blood in and those by two thousand fourteen had to completely come out, um, of any type of material.
So we know Lake Hills was experiencing some problems. Have y'all resolved any of those volume or water pressure issues?
So we did, so one of the things that Bobby found was the pilot valve was on the getter tank was messed, was, was messing up. He got the parts in to fix it, it would stay closed, it wouldn't open. So we got the manufacturer involved in getting that pilot valve fixed. We actually got it on a few weeks ago and now we're just kind of, we're, he's made some adjustments, kind of keeping on it. Now we're just making, uh, an appointment with Vlad to do the rest of the testing to see what we can do to resolve their issues.
Well, the squeaky pipe did get there all this time.
In our meeting, uh, Tuesday night, there was, uh, there was this one, one lady that came and she said everything was fine.
Wow.
And so, uh, I thought that was, that was good, everybody was happy and had their, had their water going, so.
And new water meters, have they been installed now throughout the entire?
Yes, yes, there are some that we have, where they're not fully, like they're not in, they might still have an analog, but it's ones that like, for example, we've had to change something out, you might see an analog meter in there until we can get the, the new one back from Kendall, or Kendall Supplies, the people that we get our meters from. So if you ever go up to the meter and you see like a regular old meter in there, that's just until we can get that other meter back from the company to install it. Or any of your new cats that are going in, some of them will have the new meters and some of them might, you might see an analog meter in there until we can get a shipment from the manufacturer.
And any plans on expand, I mean, is there any immediate plans in communities for expansion of lines and sizes of lines and fire hydrant expansion or?
No.
We would love for you to do that. Morph hydrants, right?
No, no, but I can't touch a little bit.
As needed, as needed.
Oh, yeah, right.
I can't touch on a little bit of how we like the extending and expansion and stuff like that. Um, if somebody's wanting to extend a line or if they're wanting to install a new line, that is up to the contractor's expense to pay. Um, you get in tou- we get you in touch with our engineer. It has to be engineered, it has to be sent to, uh, EPD, EPD has to approve it. Our board has to be willing to take that over. Goes into our specs. For example, right now, uh, we prefer ductile iron pipe. It is a little bit more of expensive of a pipe, but we're, in our system, we see that that is a lasting pipe that is, for example, Bobby and my crew, it's very rare that they do work on ductile iron. It's usually PVC or the AC line that they're going out and fixing. Um, or those are the line, like I said, we're, some of the lines that we're experiencing, we're, we're having breaks on, they're just sitting in there, they're coming to where, at that point in time when they went in, that was great, that was something that should have, that's what everybody was putting in back then. But now they're, the pipe expectancy is going down. So, but we've learned that ductile iron is our friend and we prefer it than any other pipe.
On some of the roads, like if, if a contractor is going to put in a mile of new road, can they get accepted through the Dade standards for the road in the county? Do you require, it has to be at least four inches and it has to be this type of line?
So we do want it six inch or higher, six inch pane or higher because that is what fire protection for the meters, for the fire, um, hydrants to go on. Um, I know that that rule has changed over the years. I think when I first started, like it might have changed, it used to be four, now it's six. Six, so if anything new goes in, it's going to be six. It can't, it can't be lower because of course, everybody wants that fire protection and we can't, we can't promise you that if you put some, if you want something lower. We're, we're not going to want to put it in, I'm going to be honest. We're going to say, no, we want you to put six inch or larger in.
One example, the company that met with the city on the development of housing, Elizabeth and Bobby was there, Lad was there, uh, at the time Commissioner Romley and County Executive, Executive-elect, uh, Townsend was there. And that's what we talked about is that they would have to put this in, this is the size. But again, we're getting all the partners together, but fire protection's a big for a city that's fixing to add a hundred, possibly a hundred more homes on it. That's a big thing. And then if it, you can't deadhead it or flow it where it just falls off, so that was a big thing. I believe in the line, so that's still the preliminary work that we're deciding what to do before we say yes or look at any accession or doing. But we got to make sure that we can produce the water and then we can get rid of the water.
Yes.
So that's still what we're doing our due diligence with as we're moving forward.
There's an important group here tonight. I can tell you the one group that can shut the school board down, the city down, economic development down, and the county down is water. I'm telling you, water makes a, it makes all the difference. It's the lifeblood of our community. I heard Ted say that time and time again and he's right. Uh, it's a blessing and it can be a curse. Uh, we can have the best economic development team in the world, sell the best company in the world to come to Dade County, but if we can't get water to them, we got a problem, a major problem. And so that's the importance again of this meeting for us to come together and, and, and build relationships and work these things out. And, uh, so if we know there's a big group coming in or prospective group, we go ahead and call the Water Authority, folks in the call is listening to a meeting and say, look, this is, you know, top secret or whatever. I mean, because they don't, a lot of companies don't want to be known immediately. And then they need, this is the opportunity, they have to work out some of these infrastructure problems if it is a problem, maybe it's not a problem, but it's always an issue. So we have to work these, through these issues together. And I appreciate y'all coming together and everybody being here. Letters of support, as you hear us talk about grants, uh, they are very important, especially these US senators, uh, and our United States representatives, congressmen. They need to hear from the local people. And so if they don't hear from the local people, I can guarantee you there's another community somewhere that's giving all these letters of support. So when you commit to doing a letter of support, please follow through. If you need a, an example, let us know, we'll help you. Uh, draft one, you know, uh, so those are critical. And so this little letter of support, that's coming up, that, is it Warnock you said?
Yes, I think, uh, next week is where, I mean, I've been working on it, but it has to be submitted by the seventh.
Right.
So next week is.
Yeah, so that's means tomorrow. Start working on your letters of support so we can get them into you next week, the first week of the month. Uh, very, very important. We're nearing, uh, almost eighty minutes here, eighty-five minutes. And I want to recognize the clerks over here. I used to be a clerk, so I'll be recognized. We have, uh, Gidget Knott, she's our county clerk. And we have April Keith, the city clerk, and we appreciate them being diligent tonight and taking the notes. And also our county attorney. You know, we just don't slap him on the back quite enough. And he threatens retirement every now and then and we don't want him to go anywhere. But Robin Rogers.
We're trying to get that ten-year contract signed.
That's right. Robin Rogers has probably served on all of these boards at one time and helped, uh, I know he's helped, maybe not directly as a school board's attorney, but he's worked with Ron over the years many times on different things. So we want to recognize Mr. Robin Rogers.
Thank you.
And, uh, say thank you. Do you have anything to say, Robin?
I don't.
Okay, as usual, he never does. That's okay, give him an opportunity. Uh, has anybody got any further comments or questions?
Carrie.
Carrie, Carrie?
I believe you're not in that.
Oh, well, we've covered it all.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being, again, we do want to say thank you to each individual board member. Those that were unable to attend tonight, we're sorry about that. Uh, different commitments and sickness or whatever may be taking place. But thank you again for being here, we appreciate you. And we will now adjourn this meeting.